Tell me when it's not cropped. We're like, it's quiet, but we're not starting. Oh, no, it's not. I know, we feel like we're all like ready to go. Okay, but I'm not doing this tonight.
In council reports, if you want to share a bit more like at teachers, we have had a couple of things from teachers from the small grant to the ground and we'll be having them come in in future councils.
Oh, okay. I thought you were saying how to do that part.
All right, a hush has come over the room, so it must mean it's time to start. We've got council members here, everyone, but Councilmember Houli is excused this evening, out of town with his family, so we do have a quorum with everyone else and we'll go ahead and get started. So I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening to the Linden City Council Chambers here at 5:15 PM on Monday, February 3rd, 2025. My name is Mayor Carolyn Lundberg, and I welcome you all here, as well as our council. We all welcome those that are here this evening. We have some, a lot of exciting things on our agenda tonight. You're welcome to pick up an agenda there at the front of the room if you'd like to follow along. There are also some special calendars on the table, so grab one on your way out if you didn't get one already. So we'll go ahead and move forward, and we always begin first with an invocation, and we're going to have that offered this evening by Councilmember Steve Stewart. And then followed by Steve, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Sarah Shroppel.
Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful for this evening and the opportunity we have to gather here together. We are grateful for this great country in which we live, and we thank thee for the blessings of freedom and peace. Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have tonight to conduct the business of this great city of Linden. We're grateful for the young people who will be recognizing tonight, who've shared their talents. We are grateful for those who have come to support them. We are mindful of recent tragedies and pray thee to bless those who have been impacted. We pray for wisdom, we pray for understanding, and the spirit of cooperation as we move forward. In these things we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Sarah. The Shroppel family, they're longtime Linden residents. If you ever need any adjustments, their dad, he's a great chiropractor. Anyway, thank you so much. Good job. And then let's go ahead and we'll move on to our call to order, so I'll just start here on my right.
Lincoln Jacobs here.
Van Broderick present.
Carolyn Lundberg present.
Jake Hoyt present.
Steve Stewart present.
All right. And as mentioned, we have Councilmember Houli excused. We all, now we'll move on to item number two on the agenda. This is our presentations and announcements, and we have a very special annual event that is run by Kathy Alred. And she has, this has a long storied history in Linden. It's one of the best traditions we have. And I'd just like to invite Kathy to come up, maybe just give a quick little 30-second summary of what the character connection is. And of course, we have a lot of young people that we're thrilled to acknowledge tonight.
Way back when, in 1993, and that's 32 years ago, there was a need voiced in Alpine School District for the, to teach character to our students. And so the PTA president at Linden Elementary got together with Jeannie Holdaway, who was the principal at the time, and they decided to start up an organization of parents and teachers and city to connect character throughout all of the entities of the citizens of Linden. And so it, they called, we called, I was on the board at the time, and we decided to call it Character Connection because we wanted to connect the businesses, the city, the families, and the schools all together in learning character. And that was, like I say, 32 years ago. And we've had many, many students who have joined together and made beautiful pictures. When we started the calendar, how many years ago was it? Doran? Doran Williams is the head of the Wasatch Behavioral Health. And they print the calendar that the students from Linden Elementary and all the schools that want to participate, we, they turn in their pictures, and then a committee decides which ones to put in the calendar. And I think it's been about 15 or 20 years, hasn't it? About 20 years that we've been doing this. And so we just really appreciate the support of our city and also our schools and teachers and our students especially, because we wouldn't have these beautiful pictures without them. So we make up a calendar together, and our printer is, is also a supporter and sponsor. And that is Copycat, and this is Len Wright, and he's our printer that prints up these beautiful posters. And we, so we have lots of people working together to bring this about. And I'm, I'm just the president of Character Connection, and it's not a formal organization anymore, but we do help the schools with different presentations on character. So without any further ado, we're going to first call Mayor Lundberg up, if she will help us, and Doran. And let's give these people a round of applause. And then another great sponsor of this is JLR Rapid Delivery. It's JLA Rapid Delivery, which is a, an Amazon delivery partner. And they sponsor it along with Len. And my husband is the owner, the owner of the Amazon delivery service. So all those packages that you get at your doors, that comes from our company in partnership with Amazon. So keep ordering those packages. Anyway, so first of all, we're going to present the city with this beautiful poster. And we're also going to give one to Len, so that he can have this in his business. And we have one also for Doran. And we appreciate them being able to be with us. So, and then Mr. Bunker, if you'll come up, Mr. Bunker's representing Linden Elementary. And you've got this for Linden Elementary.
Awesome.
And then, Mr. Bunker, we also made one so that you can have one in your, in your classroom and one in Mrs. Walker's classroom. And Mr. Walker's classroom, because they're our supporters. I go to each school and ask for support, and in years past, we've had lots more participation. But this year, we just had Linden Elementary. So let's give a round of applause. So you just want to put those down there, wherever you want to, and we'll give these out to the kids. So can I have, Carolyn, if you'll hand them their certificates and shake their hands. And then in these gifts and awards are five, five calendars for you to distribute to grandpa, grandma, aunts and uncles, whoever you'd like, and have for yourself. And then there's some treats and some things to do. So we just want you to know, we appreciate you. Our first award winner that we're going to honor is Hazel Ott. And Hazel made our cover, and also, and also she was chosen for the May. So if Hazel will come up. And then if you'll turn around, and we'll have all the kids, and then we'll get pictures.
Are we getting all of you or just?
Up and in, yes. And then for January was Soray Zurpa.
And so for, for her, we've had, Emma's going to represent her for that. She's moved to Texas, but she came here knowing almost no English, and our students helped her. By the time she left, she was ready for Texas.
What's her name?
Emma.
Emma, okay, we'll give you her prize and her certificate, and you stand up here with us as a witness.
We're going to find a way to get that to Texas.
A wonderful representative. That's great. And then Amel Shroppel, is that how I say it?
Ami.
Ami, thank you. Ami, here's yours. Ami did February on friendship. The script, the script. And then for March, it's Ellie Robinson. I'm sorry. Congratulations. And then for April is Rosie Graham. Okay. Then for May is Hazel again. And so she got her award. June is Maggie Clark. Is Maggie here?
Not here.
Okay. Then July is Gwyneth Gaskin. Thank you so much. August is Jake Braithwaite. Is Jake here? Okay. Mr. Bunker, we're going to have to get you to take these to our people that aren't here. Then September is Piper Warner. Is Piper here? Okay. Then October is Edison Kim. There you go, Edison. November is Cheyenne Taylor, and she's our first one in a long time from PG High School. She said she might not make it. I'm, we'll get that too. It's interesting, because she said, "I saw some papers sticking out of my little sister's backpack." So she said, "I picked it up, and when it said there was an art contest, I decided I'd draw for it." So I was really glad. The art teachers hadn't given her the information, but she got it from her little sister. December is Harper Hammond. There you go, Harper. We appreciate all that you've done. Now, if we can have the kids come in front and our sponsors in back. And our council, yeah, the council usually stands at the, at the ready. One more? Okay, we've got a sponsor taking one. Thank you. Then there's one more thing. This is a special treat for Doran to take home and to share with his family for all his service and work. And then, Mr. Bunker? If you'll take one and give one to each of the teachers.
Oh, wow. Let's give our schools, our teachers, our administrators, our sponsors, one more big round of applause. So, yeah.
Because sometimes the city council might become a zoo. This is a treat for me.
We will need that. Thank you. Sugar pep at the very least, on the long nights. And Kathy, I took your sheet just for a quick minute. I just wanted to say, this program has been around since I, I moved to Linden in 1993, 94 as well. And I remember this program being such, it's so important that our young kids learn these, these character connection values. Building character and dependability, friendship, courage, generosity, family service, citizenship, community, forgiveness, courtesy, gratitude, love. Isn't that tremendous? Aren't those amazing values in a world today where sometimes those values are getting lost or not really being taught? Thank you, Kathy, for your passion and love to keep this going. We just so appreciate you.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you.
Okay, we have one more presentation tonight that we wanted to cover. Is that, right, okay, because it's not on the agenda, but we know about it. So I'm going to invite former Councilmember Randy Powell to come forward with her special guest. And let's, if you want to, however, if you'd like to sit down or just stand and hold the mic and face everybody, whichever you're most comfortable.
We're the Kane Sisters here, but it's not our last name.
Mayor and council members and staff members, it's so good to see all these friendly faces here tonight and to be with you. And we are not staying. I get to take Vida home, so I will not be staying for the rest of your agenda. But I wanted to be able to introduce you to Vida Tebshale. She is a local artist who has the privilege, well, we have the privilege of having her art, and you can see it on the screen up here, being the first local artist at our community center. She is just somebody I've gotten to know over the past few years at my senior cardio drumming class. And I've gotten to know her while her son and, well, I think, well, see, who went on their mission? Was it your sister? Your sister went on her mission. I've gotten to know several of her children and her siblings. But her sister went on a mission who had been her, also her companion at the senior drumming class. And over the course of, of traveling back and forth to class once a week, I got to know Vida and find out, found out that she is an accomplished artist. And she did not start her, her wonderful artwork until she was age 65. So you children here that have submitted your artwork know that you've got a long head start on Vida, huh? So please continue and make sure that we get to have your artwork someday. But I just am so grateful to Vida, and it's my opportunity to be able to express to her many thanks for being able to share her wonderful artwork. She has anything from landscapes to wildlife, people, I just, her collection is very immense, and a small, small portion of it sits at our community center now for an art exhibition. And I know Lincoln knows her, and do you have anything that you would like to add to that, Lincoln?
Well, Vida is a neighbor down the street, and her son and daughter-in-law, and we're very, very good friends. And I know that this was not something she wanted, art in the hall, no. So Randy, thank you for encouraging her, and Vida, thank you for sharing it with us. It's absolutely beautiful.
He has had, thank you very much, Lincoln. She has, prior to coming here, she had an art gallery that she and her husband Glenn established in Penguins, Utah. And, but when Glenn passed away, she moved to Linden. We are very blessed to have her. She overlooks the temple with a magnificent view, and she has many of her artwork in her home. And I, from what I understand from Joyce, her sister, there's still a lot there, even though a lot is on our, on our community center wall. Yes, Brett is shaking his head yes back there. Yes, yes, we're, she's a very prolific artist. She's not just an artist, but she's also an author as well. So you can see on the screen back here, there's a lovely picture of Vida back in, back in the day, but she is one of my very favorite students who sits on the front row. I just love her to death. And I want to give her an opportunity to express her thoughts.
All I can say is thank you, city, for making such an easy job of putting up a display. Those lovely hangers you provided and the lights. I thought it was going to take a long time, and I griped and grafted, and it only took us one day to put it up. Thank you for doing that.
Now, how much longer can the community come see your, your display, your exposition?
I know that Heath has told me, I've asked Heath, that they don't have anything on the docket, so to speak, since we're also in the court of law here, the docket until late spring. So we've got at least two more months, I think, with Vida's artwork that is at the community, or yes, at the community center. For those who don't know, it's just around the corner, the Old Red Church, 35 North Main Street, so.
Wonderful. So fun. Thank you so much. Council, anything else you'd like to add? All right, that brings us to item number three. Now, those of you that came for special presentations, you're, you are welcome to stay, but we also know you're, you know, busy time with family as well, so this, you're welcome to head out if you would like at this time as well. Our open session item on the agenda, this is for anything that someone would like to address the council on an issue or a comment that is not on tonight's agenda. So we just give a quick minute. If anyone wants to come forward, we ask that you come to the table and state your name. All right, everyone adjusted? Wonderful. Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to our council reports. And Steve says he's ready to go. Take it away.
I'm always ready. Just have two items to report on. First is Wednesday, January 22nd. We were able to take all but one of our youth council, only one weren't able to make it to the legislature. It was the Elected Officials Day at the legislature. We had 17 of our youth and five or six of our leadership. And we were able to go up there and kind of see how things work. And, and our group was able to submit a proposal for a mock debate that was selected by the Utah League of Cities and Towns. And we had four of our youth who were able to present and, and lead that effort. And they did a really great job. We were really impressed. Our representative, Representative Schallenberger, met with them, gave them a brief tour of some of the spaces within that. And then we were able to hear from our Lieutenant Governor, Dede Hendrickson, at a luncheon afterwards. So it was, it's kind of the highlight of our youth council year, and they really enjoyed it and had a great time. So just wanted to report on that. And also, we were able to give out $3,000 in small grants to educators in our area. And we received a few cards back. We're going to make an arrangement to have some of those teachers come in and report on how they're using that money. And just, we'll look forward to that time down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Hoyt?
Yeah, just wanted to bring up the opportunity Chief Brower put in front of us to go and try out some of the Vertre training. Really a fun opportunity. I know I've had the opportunity to do it in the past. I don't know how many of you guys know Detective Sanchez. He and I were the bad boys. We, we, we won the game. It's a, it's a virtual 360 training. It's, it's impressive. It's, it's a lot of fun, so.
Did you kill any good guys?
I did. Gil did not, and so I'm, I'm in, I'm not in the wrong occupation, so.
It is crazy when you, when you're in real-time situations, and you're trying to make a split-second decision.
It is.
It makes you, makes you give a lot more respect to our, our gentleman in, in the PD.
The, the training, I saw the, the times, is it that whole, it was like six hours spread?
I suggest you, you reach out to Chief and decide a time. I know he and I are going at 3:00 tomorrow. We could take one more council member with us without getting into too much trouble. But I, I'd say just reach out to Chief so he can make sure he has a guy there to take you through it. Other than that, had the opportunity, Mayor, you had sent along a legislators' night over at Thanksgiving Point. Had the opportunity to attend that and rub shoulders with a lot of our good state legislators, Schallenberger, Val Peterson. Lot of good things going on over there and a lot of respect for Linden City. Also had opportunity to, to go to an event up in Sundance this weekend and, and rub shoulders with all three of our county commissioners. And a lot of good things going there. Spoke to Commissioner Gordon. He said that you and, he'd been working with you on, on a specific item to get some.
This, this.
Yeah, to get some money in, so. Anyways, nothing but, but respect and good things to say about Linden from all of those groups, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Broderick?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the update from Juan, our Public Works Director. We have a, the Wittison is a company that does the developing on our well number five, which is being drilled in the cemetery. This is the time where we're cautiously, very optimistic about the production of this well. But these next four to six weeks during this developing portion is where they will determine how much water we're going to be able to produce and get out of that well. So hopefully that goes as, as well as we think it's going to go. A little pun there, didn't mean that. Last Saturday, attended the North Union Irrigation Company Board Meeting and Shareholders Meeting. Juan is the. the president there and was re-elected. As long as we get our letters sent in, Mr. Adam, and I know Juan sent a letter on that, if you will do that. So still in progress of really probably shutting that down this next year will be a crucial year. I've been impressed with Central Utah Water and other agencies, working with individual water users who are still not hooked on to any city's sources for that, to help them transfer over lots of resources, lots of information and help is being provided. This has been a process going on for, I think even longer than, I'd say, four or five years is what I was going to go, since it's being talked about. But it's coming about, and so Linden City will be taking, hopefully, all of its water eventually through the PRA turnout connection, which we've been working on. And so no open ditches, no loss, no flooding, nobody getting hurt. And so we're really excited about that, and it'll be great for the citizens of Linden. Hang on, I have a call coming in.
What's up with you, Van? You can only, you can only mute so many devices.
Sorry to everyone, sorry. I want to, Youth Council, they let me drag along with them. We can never invest enough. Well, maybe we can invest too much. But the amount
of time that Steve and our former council member, Randy Powell, that was just here, Carolyn Lundberg, that got our Youth Council all set up, it is so awesome to be up there at the state Capitol with our Youth Council, to see everything that they're doing. But it gives us the opportunity to be there with them and interact with other leaders. And just such a great thing. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Randy. It's, it's a great thing. Parks and Rec, they're busy, and he gave me a long list. I apologize. Sweetheart, Sweethearts Ball, this Saturday evening, a reminder. Walker Farms has done, done us really well for this. They've allowed us to use the facility for, in Heath's word, nearly nothing. So as you bump into them, let them know how much we appreciate it from the city. We will be offering youth hockey in March for the very first time. It's sponsored by the Utah Hockey Club, soon to be called the Utah Mammoth. It is free to participate for third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade kids. Those who participate will be able to bring home a stick, I'm assuming that's a hockey stick, a puck, and a Utah Hockey Club t-shirt, and two tickets to the upcoming, upcoming home games. We also have, we're also sponsoring a chess blitz tournament. So people that want to hit each other with sticks, go hockey. Those who like the more mental thing, we've got the chess tournament. That's going to be February 12th at 6:00 PM, free. You don't have to be a pro. Anybody's welcome. We just hired a new part-time sports coordinator, and right after they got trained, they had to move. So back to the drawing board. We're looking for another, for a new replacement. Rec coordinator, right, part-time sports coordinator, applications can be done online. They're open online right now. North Point Solid Waste, we had a meeting. They're still moving forward with their onsite construction. They should be getting permitting shortly. And then they also sent around an email, Juan, that they were contacted by us to do a new, to install a new storm drain, and thus far, nobody on the board has rejected that. So hopefully it just goes through. And that's it.
Thank you so much.
I might interrupt and go one more. We do have a Pro Bench Irrigation Company meeting this Saturday. Lincoln has had some conflicts come up. I was wondering if either one of you two might be able to go. It'll start at nine, the first meeting. The second goes from 10. Probably be done about 11:30. All right, Steve, that is held at the Central Utah Water Conservancy District on 800 North.
The old Osmond Studios, down that road.
So what time is that, 9 o'clock?
9 o'clock and 10 o'clock. Thank you.
All right, thank you, council. Really quickly, I've been, you know, Adam and I have been very involved in the new school district reorganization, kind of getting everybody, kind of, we meet with the other, all four cities together that are the reorganizing district, which is Orem Vineyard, Linden, and Pleasant Grove City. The four mayors, the four of us got on a call with, you know, as you know, it's the legislative session. I've been up to the Capitol about four times already, just working on different issues and bills that are coming and trying to coordinate with legislators. There's always hundreds of bills going. It's a frenzy. It's a flurry. And there's things that we need to try to help them understand certain perspectives in the bills they're drafting, or to explain why a bill may not have good, you know, have unintended consequences that are not really great. So Senator Grover is tackling the school district, some of the statutes around that, that the, the Senate President wants him to, to tackle. And so the four mayors, you know, right now, there's a little bit of, it's interesting between the three districts that are going to be reformed. Now, there's a little bit of jockeying of, you know, some self-interest, which is kind of naturally to be expected, but yet still wanting to hold together some sense of collaboration and be able to leverage certain resources together through cooperative agreements. But this is the time that everyone's kind of staking their claim on how assets or debt is going to be divided, or what is the process going forward. So he's writing, he, he had put together a draft bill that I think all of you saw. And in our meeting that us four mayors had with him, just representing the South, or what is temporarily called the Tempanogus District, we just expressed to him a couple of things that we were pretty unanimous together on. And it, basically, I can tell you the status is, as of today, he was sending into committee a new draft, but he's, in this draft, it's kind of all the issues that maybe are, have consensus among the 14 cities that are splitting into three, that we all said, yeah, these are some things that make sense. And then some of the things that are a little more sticking points, he's going to follow up with a second or third draft a little bit later in the session, so he can kind of flesh those out and get a little bit more input and thought behind him. So that's kind of where things are moving forward. There's a couple of other bills I could bore you with, but I won't do it right here. We can just kind of probably talk about it later in council reports, but, sorry, at the end, sorry. This is council reports right now. But I'll move forward. So the other thing is, we have a resident on 400 North who has been really active and passionate about studying his road and, and the impact on the safe routes to school, schools and, and complete sidewalks, and, and how that affects people, pedestrians, kids going to school, bicycles. So our engineering staff, I don't see them here tonight, they did a traffic study there, well, just had a traffic count. We have like a, what is the machine called that they put out on the streets, just to kind of get the average speeds? I can't remember the name of it.
Traffic counter.
Traffic counter, that simple. Okay. So it is warranted that 400 North should have maybe some, some things looked at. So you guys will probably be seeing some of that coming forward as a recommendation from Trent. And then Mazer Preparatory Academy here in Linden is a charter seven through 12 school. And they had their Winter Fest. It's a really great, every January, the kids stop all regular classes. And they have one month where they do a very intense study of a particular subject. And it's a lot of creative things, a lot of variety that the kids choose their programs. So they had kind of a big final night, and I came to see those. And they also, more importantly, are planning a very large addition to their building. As, as you know, sometimes the way the traffic kind of goes in and out of there can be a little bit challenging. So they're going to have a large arts auditorium added on to their building, along with some other classroom availability. It's a really incredible project. You're welcome to go down there and see it. They have all the renderings. And so this is an arts facility. They've indicated they would love, you know, to collaborate with the city in the future if we wanted to have, you know, any programming there in this state-of-the-art for plays and productions and music and et cetera. And they also expressed, right now, their baseball team, just to practice baseball, is going all the way to American Fork City. They would love to see Linden City have a baseball field at some point that they could practice and kind of call home. So something, food for thought as we look at our parks plans and things that might be coming up in the future. And then also, there's the Chamber, Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber Gala, that's going to be coming up on February 19th. I don't know if any of you got a communication yet from our Chamber. If not yet, just put that on your calendar. That's where we'll acknowledge our, our businesses for this past year. All right, I will now turn the time over to our city administrators' report. Adam Cowie here.
Yeah, just a reminder, on our next meeting, February 20th, is Thursday at 5:15. That's our budget kickoff meeting. And then on well number five, we'll have the well development contractor, they indicated they would be starting next week, the week of February 10th. And so just an FYI on that. A few of those legislative items, the mayor's covered, and we'll talk some more about that at the end of our meeting, too. So that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are now on item number six. This is the approval of the minutes from our city council meeting that was held January 21st, 2025. I see a 2024. One little quick adjustment. All right, council, have you had a chance to look over those and see if there's any additions or changes?
I have no corrections.
Yeah, I had the chance to review it as well, and I'm ready to make a motion, if that's okay with the council. I'll, I'll motion to approve the city council minutes of January 21st, 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
They are approved. Thank you very much. Okay, on to item number seven. Typically, this is for items that don't require public comment, that just kind of general housekeeping. We have none tonight, so we will head off that one. And then we're now on item number eight. This is a public hearing for a budget and fee schedule amendment. So I'd like to invite our finance director, Kristin Aaron, to come forward.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt, to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to start with discussing fee schedule change. And I'll invite Juan Garrido.
Oh, you did the rolled R. Good job.
I did. I usually can't.
Okay, and this is a proposal to do an update to our fees at the cemetery. We usually have to keep up with our neighbors, so we are not the, the low-ball cemetery where, and then we get overwhelmed by residents that do not have a cemetery, well, not residents, but citizens of this county. Vineyard doesn't have a cemetery. And Pleasant Grove just recently increased their, their fee. So this is just to make an adjustment, so we keep up with, with the rest of the fees and not become the catch-all for other people. So we are proposing, I don't know if you can see that, there we go. Yeah. So sort of the fees, just to keep up with the Pleasant Grove, if you bring the, the spreadsheet, Adam, if you would please. The, the green line at the bottom is our proposal. The gray above it is what we used to be at, or where we are at. And the goal is to keep up with the Pleasant Grove line that is just in red, if you scroll up a little. Is the $3,300 out of, out of pocket for, for non-residents, and we are proposing to, to be in par with that for non-residents. Our residents will still pay considerably less, $1,600, but that includes their interment. So when they pay the $1,700, that is, there is no added fees to that. Any questions?
No, we appreciate you. I, I think we've discussed several times the philosophy as a, as a council at your guidance. And so I appreciate you keeping an eye on it, bringing it to us. I, I think we're all, we all have, you know, we, we don't want what happened four or five years back, where, you know, someone from Mapleton's coming here just because we're the cheapest. And so we fully agree, and I appreciate you keeping an eye on it the way you do.
Some from out of the county as well.
Yeah.
You know what he said. Thanks.
All right, if there's no other questions on the fee schedule change, then I will move on with the budget amendment.
Great.
All right, thank you, Juan.
Thanks, Juan.
All right, so I submitted a couple pages of budget amendments, and, and then there are accompanying notes. One of the biggest changes is on note 11, it's to the Parks Department, and it is for railroad crossings for the Heritage Trail, for the permits, not for the crossings themselves, just for the permits. And so that's a fee that we're paying to UDOT.
And if I understand, Kristin, we'll get reimbursed on that, won't we, at some point?
Well, I'm not sure that it's reimbursed, but it's being put towards what we
Our match.
For our match, yeah. So, and then if we, if we are, if we are overpaying, then we would be reimbursed.
Does that go to UDOT, or does it go to the railroad?
So we paid Union Pacific for the permits, and then we're, we're submitting the, our costs to UDOT to go for our match for Heritage Trail.
This is to get the ball rolling with the railroad, and because it takes
You've got to strike while the iron's hot, and then get it going. Okay, thank you. There's always, for those council members that are new, it's common to see Kristin come in when there's just things we didn't anticipate in what was approved in the last year's budget.
Right.
Here and there. So we, we, because it's, we're the fiduciaries, it has to be approved by you, so.
Did you have any questions on any of the other changes?
All right, well, this is a public hearing. So do we have any further questions for staff?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, this is a public hearing, so if anyone has a, a comment, we would take that now from the public on these budget amendments. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, seen none. I'll, I'll motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing, motioned by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to you, council, on this item.
Yeah, I'd just point out the healthy fund balance and that general fund balance. Great to see that, Van, as we've been on this council as long as we have. There's hard, there's hard to point out a number that points to financial strength and stability more than that general fund balance number. So appreciate you. You're a big part of that.
That's the number I look at first.
Me, too. We're trained, right? That's the number I first go to. So if there's no other comments.
Just add to it, Kristin, you're the, the person we talk to about this a lot, but to everybody, Adam's staff, everybody for helping to contribute and make, help Linden to become the financially stable city that it is. To all of you, thank you.
Yes, because it's not just me. The department heads and Adam, yeah.
I was told it was just you.
Okay.
Just kidding.
I spend the money, you watch them.
No, we really appreciate it. I'd like to move that we approve Resolution 2025-4-R, amending the fiscal year 2024-25 budget and fee schedule as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. Any further discussion? All right, seen none, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. The motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, item number nine tonight is a concept review. So no action, legislative action is to be taken on this. It is just for some feedback for a potential development called the Linden Jack Duncan Site Plan. This is on 550 North State Street.
Mayor, before we get started, similar to the development of all of that piece, I have a, out of abundance of caution, I'd like to declare a potential conflict and recuse myself due to a relationship with, with
Okay.
and recuse myself due to a relationship with the landlord.
All right.
Step down and hang out.
All right, very good. We do still have a quorum, so for this item, Councilmember Hoyt is recused. And then we'll go ahead and move forward and like to introduce our community development director, Michael Florence, who will present the information.
Great, thank you. And we have Heath and McKay Johnston here. They're the applicants that are looking to develop the property and seeking your feedback tonight. So they have this last portion of the property there at 550 North State under contract. They are proposing, let me go to their site plan real quick. They're proposing two commercial buildings there on State Street, looking at potentially a Jack-in-the-Box and Dunkin' Donuts, and possibly one other tenant there. The Bank of America that's going in just north of there, they have their building permits, and so they should be starting any day over there on that site. The reason we're here is, you can see on the, how this lot is laid out. You've got this small little portion that comes over to 500 North here. Let me pull up more on the screen. You've got this kind of irregular shape area over here. It's connected to the lot. It's 73 feet wide, very narrow piece. And it goes behind the two existing businesses there, the dental office and I think it's Lindstrom Brothers there on the corner. And so the applicant is petitioning for some discussion about, they would like to add some live-work units on that small section there. I'll go back to the site plan. But, well, let me talk about this first. If you remember, our ordinance, our planned residential development ordinance, it was created in about 2016. We amended it in 2020 to allow for the Songbird Cove development, the Tilia Court development. And then we amended it again after those developments came in and added some more ordinance requirements. But the ordinance has this 300-foot setback requirement. And that 300 feet is about where the dotted line is there. So everything from that 300-foot mark to State Street is required to be commercial. And then from the mark back, it can be residential. And there's some density transition things that have to happen. And so the developer's plan would be to do two buildings. You'd have four units that are commercial, say, three units that are commercial, and then three live-work units on that site. And so, and the developer can explain more about, you know, what he sees, his vision for those. But our ordinance, you know, it doesn't allow residential in that area. And so that's the main discussion about this, is whether or not you want to amend the ordinance to allow residential in that 300-foot setback. Now, the way the ordinance is written, we've specifically said, you know, it's tied to these three areas. The other area was out there on 800 West by Mazer Academy and 1600 North. There are six townhomes, or six or seven townhomes right there. That was the first planned residential development project. And then we amended it for Songbird Cove and Tilia Court. So we have those areas tied in the ordinance. So if you wanted to make an amendment, it would have to be specific to, you know, this area, for example. But, so that's the major discussion we need to have. Do you want to open up the ordinance to allow some live-work units within that 300-foot setback for this residential proposal? So the planning commission reviewed this. They had varying degrees of feedback on this. Some were supportive, some were not supportive, some were okay with, you know, a trial basis at this location. Some saw some mixed use in small startup spaces as beneficial. But it was pretty mixed on being concerned with opening up the ordinance and/or trying it out in this location, so. So with that, Mayor, if you'd like, we can let the applicant talk more about his proposal.
Yes, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Florence. He did a great job of running down the basics of what we're trying to do. The area that does not fit within the zone, it doesn't touch State Street. It's very unique, 73 feet. We've tried to do everything we can to find something that'll work for it because we're paying the same price for all the land. So we're just trying to figure out what would be best. The dentist is not ready to sell, and the other building, there's talk of it potentially selling. We've not been able to come to any agreement on that, which would change our plan. The live-work is a product where the main level would be, we've talked to different people that have interest. We have individuals that want to do like windshield repair and replacement. So they have a garage aspect to it. And then the live-work is just affordable housing for employees and/or others that are associated with the business, separate entrance, very attractive buildings. As far as Jack-in-the-Box, we're close with them, and it's coming down to us just having an approval, because we don't want to sign and then not have an approval. And same with Dunkin' Donut. The third has a lot of different people looking at it, and that'd be in the second building, if enough space. But those are, I think, I live in North Orme, I'm right on the border here, so I love Dunkin' Donuts, and I like, surprisingly, the tacos at Jack-in-the-Box. So I have other motives. But that being said, we think that overall it meets the plan, and hopefully you would view it as such.
So from reading it, it looks like that the building further south, closest to 500 North, first level is commercial use.
Yes.
And then you'd have three units on the second story.
So there'd be just one above on each of those, so it's basically a living quarters on the two. And then on the one farther to the east, one of those would be warehouse and office, and one live-work above it. The look would be exactly the same, the use would not be. And we already have someone that wants to be in the straight office and warehouse.
So how many residential units total?
Three.
Three residential total units, one and one.
Yeah, it's a little confusing, that one of them is an office above it, and that meets the zone.
So when you mentioned that this is a live-work, I mean, you're saying the rent, would it be where the business has first option to use the residential part and decide who lives there? Or with the business that's operating there?
And it just depends, because within your zone, there's lots of different types of business. But this is a product, as a developer, that is underutilized. There's a lot of need for the smaller areas, you know. For, even in the world we live in with delivery, sometimes it's a staging area. But they're just good old reputable businesses. Three of them would have the housing above it, and it would be tied mainly. I mean, if they don't have someone, they could put someone else up there. But it's almost always live-work, where there's a tie with the employer, or they own the business.
Is there other, are there other areas that have this live-work that you can give me an example? This is one where we're doing it, or someone else is doing it?
So there's quite a bit of live-work. There's some in Pleasant Grove. A lot of that's more retail. This is more like a real business. There's a few in Springville, if I remember right. But in other states, this has been embraced. In Utah, it's a little slow, only because there's not zones for it. We're doing one in Heber right now, that there is a zone. And that'll be a 60-unit project right off their Main Street. But most of the cities don't have an exact zone for this type.
So if I'm driving by, I might just see it as a mixed use? It would look the same thing as that, or does it look different?
So usually, they have a flat roof and look more like a commercial building with your zone. And Mr. Florence will be a pitched roof, right, with code. So it would look like a townhome, unless you're showing it for business and have signage for the business. It's 1,000 square feet, so these lease up very fast, because like I said, there's just not a lot. You know, most of the stuff is big box. And so for anything that does repair, or, you know, a fine cabinet shop that does specialty orders, those type of businesses usually are the ones that occupy the space.
Do you plan to sell these, or do you intend to continue to hold them?
So to answer overall, the Jack-in-the-Box, they will own their own. The other we'll keep, which is the Dunkin' Donut. And then these, we're contemplating back and forth. More than likely, they will stay in our partnership.
Do you have any elevation examples?
We provide a few. We haven't put a roof on it to meet code yet, but we can get those to you shortly.
Okay.
I think you'll find them attractive. We, as developers, we learned a long time ago, we, I mean, it's staying the obvious, but yet you drive around and you see not the obvious. But we want attractive buildings that have enough parking. And parking is a nightmare if you, it's what kills your development, so.
All right.
So you're saying Scott Healy has no intention of selling yet at this point?
He is continuing to practice. I haven't, I've had agents and others talk with him, so he's still, he wants to sell when he's done, but he won't say when he's done, so.
The planning commission made a comment about, one or more said something about having some patience. That's the patience that they're talking about, is Scott Healy, who is not giving us any.
I think so.
Yes, that was.
If I remember right.
Yeah, I know Dr. Healy, he's my dentist. He's definitely firm that he's not ready. And I think, you know, it's interesting, I was having some conversations with residents and planning commissioners about another area of the community. And they said, gosh, we sure would like to see this, you know, business on the main level, maybe some housing upstairs, kind of a concept. So I'm open to it. It's only three, you're only asking three housing units, and they would be, if it's, you know, part of the architecture of the building, and it provides a more affordable place for an employee to live and work, I think that's, could be a benefit.
To your point, there's a lot of specialty places where they really do want to live, where they work. So the owner of the business literally is the person.
So I actually went to Fairview, a very small town, to have Luthier work on a challow. And that's exactly what he does. He lives on Main Street, has this old historic building. You go in, the violin shop, everything you'd imagine, where he's making instruments and repairing instruments, and up the little stairs is his apartment. And that's where he lives and works, and he's a master at what he does. And so I can visualize a little bit of how that might play out for some business owners.
Yeah, that is a perfectly example of who is interested.
And I think also, you know, there's some discussions we need to have about parking. You know, how does that work? Because you've got a garage door with two parking stalls in front of it. And if it's being used for commercial and residential, and you're trying to deal with other residents in there, too. There's some layout things we really need to work on. I think this has got some issues that we need to work on, too, so.
And what does 500 North look like? It says here somewhere that 500 North may have to be an option. That's, is that well-developed, that street?
And that comment came from, because Talons Reach Lane and Hawks Ridge Lane, those are really residential streets. And so, you know, are we okay with, you know, six or four commercial buildings going in there and, you know, using part of that road? And so those are discussions we need to talk about.
We're really excited about it. Our hope today was to get feedback. Staff's been very good to work with, and so we will, we'll make whatever adjustments, and then we'll be back in front of your approvals in the near future. We're hoping to get started as soon as possible, at least on the retail side, and hopefully we can make it work and come up with the best use of land here.
For me, it's hard to look at an above picture and say, oh, yeah, I love that, right? So when they were talking about elevation, I was scrolling through, looking around, trying to see what does that look and feel down? So that would be nice, right? I'd love to see that.
I mean, I could pull up the ones you provided to me.
Let's show them, and then we can.
They just, they didn't meet the ordinance, and I felt uncomfortable showing you something that dramatically didn't fit the ordinance.
Would you feel more comfortable if I got you some chocolate right here?
I can think of another.
I don't want you to be uncomfortable, Mike.
There's another kind of out-of-the-box business here in Linden. I could direct you to, over on Main Street, next to Hatfieldadelphia. There's an island-style dance. So they wanted to do a big, huge dance studio, but it was technically kind of on a lot of residential people around it. So they built the dance studio to look like a big house. But it's, and downstairs, the dance studio owners live in an accessory apartment. But the rest of the house is all dance studios. And then that's the corner that they recently landscaped, and for parking, they have a pretty good sizable parking lot on the corner. Do you know, y'all know what I'm talking about? So that's where we have an example in our city of kind of a hybrid live-work business location that I can think of.
As land gets more and more expensive, it becomes the best thing for services. Your community is big lots, right? Everyone knows Linden is big lots. But when you get to services, it gets harder and harder to make the numbers work and have a tenant bill to pay. And so between these two, it really is a good product and keeps the rent down as well. As you can see, those are the ones we're doing in Heber, and so those are bigger buildings. But you can get an idea of the elevation, the way the front looks. It would be similar to that with roofs. So you have the, on this side, there would only be garages on one side. The back side would look more like the one that doesn't have the garages, which would face, you know, three of the areas. Obviously, the garages face each other, and there is parking in front of them, which is standard for this kind of product, so.
What is it about these that don't fit ordinance?
Well, what.
Residential, for starters.
And our ordinance requires we have a sloped roof, this, that. And originally, when this was shown to me, all six garage doors faced Talons Reach, Talons Cove. And so, you know, there were some issues with commercial businesses, you can't back out onto a street. And so mainly, it was the design of the building.
And this, my initial reaction is it's a little utilitarian, boxy-looking. It would need to maybe kind of have a little more of a flow and a blend with its surroundings.
The roof line will help with that dramatically.
All right, council, any other feedback? Would there be openness to this, if the applicant works with staff to meet code and deal with a couple of the issues that Mr. Florence is seeing on it initially?
A couple of my observations. So when this initial project for that residential part came in, I voted no. So now to bring in more residential makes me more uncomfortable as well, when the idea was, we'll preserve this commercial space if you'll allow us to do all this residential. And now, well, we need more residential. I realize it's an awkward piece of ground, but I look at how that other part develops when Lindstrom and Healy sell, how that impacts how it's developed. And then the, again, kind of the discussion of vehicular traffic coming out of residential/work areas into the residential area. We had lots of discussion on those roads and how they would be protected. Like the other concepts of that, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts and a Jack-in-the-Box. Thrilled at that concept, a little uncomfortable here yet.
Thank you.
I do my best to get to all the planning commission meetings. And I was there at the beginning of this meeting, and then I had something come up, and I had to take off, and then I came back again, and you guys were all done. I wished I could have heard a little bit, because I know that there's some planning commissioners that were, you know, very aware of all of these unfoldings, as Van mentioned. And I would want to reach out to them a little bit more and understand how they felt. My idea of, it would definitely need to fit in the area.
All right, we have one council member who's absent, and then one who is recused and would not, you know, be voting on this. But Councilmember Stewart, your thoughts?
I'm curious about the live-work concept, as well as you expressed. I see some options for that. I'm not sure about trying to fit it into such a small space. I'm with whoever mentioned patience, and I. And I understand that's hard, because who knows how long that really is going to be there. But it feels like it would be better to develop that all at once, rather than just try to shove something into a small piece of property. Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you. We'll keep working on it and see you in the future. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We'll invite Councilmember Hoyt back. All right. We will now be moving on to item number 10. This is also another concept review of the Castlewood Development on 700 North. And we'll go ahead and have Mr. Florence present some information, and we'll invite the applicants forward.
Give me just a minute. I got a few items to pull up with this. All right. Well, thank you again. So this is a concept review for Castlewood Development. They have the property under contract for the south side of 700 North. It's approximately 40 acres in size, and it's highlighted there with the red rectangle on 700 North. I'm going to just go through some high-level items, and then we can turn the time over to the Castlewood Development Group. So they're proposing 87,000 square feet of commercial space, 338 apartments, and 37 townhomes. And let me go to their, their proposal here. So the red would be, so let's take out the large section in the middle here. Let's, let's take that section out for a second. So their 87,000 square feet of commercial would be what's highlighted in the red area along 700 North. The residential, they're proposing, these would be multi-story buildings, four-story in height for these buildings here. And then 37 townhomes there on the corner with, on 1700 West. The other residential would be on this corner here on 700 North and 1200 West, near the tracks line. As I went through this project for your staff report, let's see. And this was some very rough calculations by me. But, so as I just looked at the land, the land use areas, and so the, the areas highlighted in blue would be commercial. So you've got the parking lot in front of the big-box store that we're working on. You know, that, that area would be commercial, because it would supply most of the parking for that big-box store. Then the rest of the blue would be there between Anderson Boulevard and 1700 West. That, that equals about 62%. The residential in yellow is about 36%. And then the green is the, is the one-acre open space that they're proposing, which would be about 2% to 2.5%. On their site plan, if you, let's go back to that. When you look at that, you're approximately 20% opens, or 20% landscaping in that area. So it's a good landscaped development area. One of the things you'll notice also is parking. Parking for commercial does take up a lot of space. There, they'll be providing about 1,200 parking spaces for their 87,000 square feet of commercial. And then this big-box retailer would need about 834 spaces. So about 200, 2,000 parking spaces for this commercial along 700 North. As we look at this, you know, in 2021, we adopted a master plan for 700 North. You know, the vision for that area, and sorry, it's a little fuzzy, but you know, it's an area to, for unique experiences, for the community together. The focus was commercial with high design standards. At that time, we were working a lot more on the bus rapid transit along 700 North. And, you know, really creating a, like it says, a thriving walkable community that enhances the lifestyle of Linden residents in the present and future. So a couple of things on that master plan, it, let me pull up a couple exhibits from it. So there was some, there was a number of goals that we, we looked at as far as enhancing the corridor, enhancing all modes of travel, creating an identity in this area, high design standards, looking at bus rapid transit, creating a regional hub for transit, a walkable area, creating what we called at that time a town center with, you know, lots of amenities, gathering places, restaurants, retail, and then really supporting economic development, you know, destination experiences, good, good commercial uses, a regional center for this area and for our community. We broke the area down into districts. So the red was commercial districts, focusing on that core area at Anderson Boulevard and 700 North. In this proposal, with this big-box store, we would need to move that town center to the west, you know, a little bit, so that block could be used by the, by the big-box store there. We also looked at heights, and these were recommendations, but, you know, ranging from two to three stories, up to three, three to four stories, is, as we get closer to the town center area. Couple of things that, this also shows in, for our master plan, we talked about having a, a Main Street through the, through the development. The developers got a street here in the, in the middle of the development to provide access from Anderson Boulevard to 1700 West. That's a street that should accommodate pedestrians, bicyclists, you know, should be kind of the backbone of the, of the block there. You know, and one of the other things in our general plan, we really, in our general plan, we really focus on placemaking for this corridor as well, implementing the vision of a, of a, of focusing on commercial and, and creating a, an identifiable area with placemaking, with good architecture, signage, gateway features. We also, in our general plan, go up to that real quick. A few of the policies we call out in our general plan and specific to this area is, is, you know, striking a balance between a little bit of country and future needs for growth, creating a streetscape program, transforming Geneva Road, State Street, 700 North into unique areas, developing the 700 North commercial gateway according to principles and ideas contained in the, in our 700 North master plan. So referring back to that, prioritizing the area for economic development, creating it as a regional center, and again, as a, as a transportation hub. So that's kind of an overall view of, you know, our 700 North master plan, what our general plan's saying. And then also, you know, the developer's plan. One other item we need to talk about is residential's, I'm sure, going to be the major discussion tonight, is because if the developer were just doing commercial, you know, he would just be presenting site plans. So one of the items with, with residential is, is we do have some sewer issues, some sewer capacity issues. There's, there's an issue on Second South and close to Geneva. It's in this area here where Lift Station 7 and Lift Station 4 connect, and we've got a forced main capacity issue there. And this is something we've been planning, that's, that's on our radar. But we need to put in a redundant sewer line, or forced main line in there to help deal with some, some capacity issues. Because our zoning didn't consider residential, or it doesn't currently consider residential, you know, they, we are, we do have these sewer capacity issues. There's some, we've been going through this a lot the last few weeks with a third-party engineer, and there are some, we think we have some solutions, but there's some sewer pump upgrades that would need to be made at Lift Station 4 as well. So there's, there's two big sewer issues in this area that we can go into more detail at a future time, or if you have more questions tonight, we're prepared to talk about that. But, but there are some upgrades if you're considering residential, even if you're considering a hotel, that they have a very similar capacity, or, you know.
Sewer demand.
Yeah, demand, thank you. And, and so those, those are some things we'll, we'll need to consider. So with that, do you have any questions for me or other staff before we, you know, turn the time over to the developer? They have got a presentation ready for you as well.
All right. I'd like to welcome the team from Castlewood Development. And I, and thank you, thank you very much. Mike Florence, you know, we've worked really hard the last few years to kind of create this vision and just maybe to kind of share the idea of what we're hoping to accomplish here is, as we mentioned, you know, Linden doesn't have an identifiable downtown village. So this, this was, this has been many years in the making of study and preparation and kind of setting the table for, to have hopefully something that is, you know, what is placemaking? That might be a new word to some people. And so what we're hoping to accomplish here is a destination where we're balancing commercial as well as community goals. And so that we can have it a destination that's an engaging environment, that will be driving business, and, but also fosters a sense of community and connection. And then it's a place that people will want to come, and it's family and, you know, friendly, speaks to kind of our cultural values here in Linden. So it's kind of a special place. People will want to kind of visit and stay and spend time and spend their money, right? So looking at ways, how do we craft this? How do we make a placemaker for Linden on a smaller scale that speaks to our community and our values? So, you know, this takes partnership to accomplish. And so I'd like to welcome Castlewood Development, who has stepped up to the plate to, to, to work with us on this. So we'll go ahead and go from there.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. My name's Dwayne Rasmussen, representing Castlewood Development. I'll explain a little bit about our history here in a minute. With me is Greg Baderell, with our design firm, and also Haley Pratt, who's been very involved in this from the very beginning, and a couple of other of our partners are here as well. We, Haley and I started working on this with the Andersons over a year ago. We have sat in their living room many, many times trying to solve these issues that you're trying to solve tonight, and make sure we can bring you a, a project that was suitable for your committee, for your community, that created a little bit of country, but allowed us to make a place that we could support financially. And we've been working very hard at that with the mayor and a couple of council members, and Mike and his staff, and some of the people from the Public Works Department, to see if there's some way we can't make these, these goals come together. So it's been, it's been a long year. I'm sure it's been longer for the Andersons than it has for Castlewood. But they've hung in there with us, and I noticed Lane and Ron are here this evening, and we're glad to have them with us as well. We have on our team as well, a very credible leasing group by, by the name of Mountain West Realty. They're probably one of the premier leasing groups in the country. When we first got here, a year ago, we started to look for tenants, and we looked long and hard, and we kept coming up empty, because there was not a draw. And so we weren't sure where we were going to go with it about four months ago, when all of a sudden, a major international box store dropped into town. You had the foresight, I think, with the mayor's prompting to buy that extra acreage, which allowed a major box store to fit in there. That's the kind of draw that we needed to, to make things happen. And that's when things started to fall in place for us a bit. Our leasing team got busy. They've got this out to the, to the national community to see who might be interested, and we're starting to get some feedback now. But I know that first and foremost on the minds of everybody in this room is to make sure that that international box store stays intact. And that's certainly our goal as well, because things will change dramatically for all of us if they're gone. So that's what kind of brings us here this evening. We are a company that's been around 25-plus years. Some of my other partners are in the room. We've done a lot of residential development over that 25 years, a lot of it multifamily for rent product. We've done a certain amount of higher-end homes as well, and some townhomes. My career began, I go back to what the lady said when she opened the meeting, she said way back when, in 1993. I thought that was yesterday. When I started my career, I was working for a local developer. Some of you may or may not know John, by the name of John Price, who did malls all across the West. And I had the good fortune of being able to chase some of those sites for him, Washington, Oregon, New Mexico, Idaho, and we did a number of malls. So I have a great deal of retail experience as well, and I'm kind of glad to get back in that business. So if you have any questions about us, we can ask, we can answer them specifically. I think Mike has done a very good job of explaining kind of what our plan is, what our thoughts are. Just to give you a little idea of how we got there, we, we first asked how much, how much can this community absorb in terms of retail? And our brokers and the people that we have involved in the leasing think that what we show on here at about 87,000 square feet plus the major box is about what this community can absorb. We're competing with the, the site down at the freeway, and they're taking some tenants as well. But we have a lot of interest from people who want to be closer to the community, restaurants, smaller retailers, and there may be a small grocery store in the mix. We show that in our site plan. We hope that could happen. If it can't, we'll break it up into other retail. It's probably 30,000 square feet, maybe another 20,000 square feet next to it. But we've hired MGBA here to design our site. What you see is their work product. I'm going to turn it over to Greg and let him explain particularly how that plaza works. It seemed to get lost in what Mike presented, and that's no shot at you, Mike, but I think we put a lot of time and effort into that. And it's bigger than it seems to be. I'm going to compare it to some other sites that you might be familiar with. We think that is a real partnership we can work on with the city to create public space there, whether that contains a water feature, or a skating rink, or a stage, or some combination of all of those things, as well as green space, that can come together, and we can be your partner in that regard for sure. So Greg, I'm going to turn it over to you to kind of walk through that site plan, if you would. Haley, have I missed anything?
Okay, great. So yeah, if you'd like to. Greg, let me have you grab the microphone, too.
I'm a loud talker. People in front of me at Jazz Games don't appreciate me, appreciate me very much. So if you'd like.
Our recording doesn't hear unless it's pretty close, unfortunately.
That sounds totally fine with me. So Greg Boldrera with MGB Plus A. We've been evaluating the site planning that had been occurring and making some adjustments to help it better align with some of the goals and input that we'd heard from the, the mayor and council members. And so if you'd like to go to that site plan that shows, probably at the next page, and then you could zoom in onto that central area. And so one of the things that we wanted to make sure happened, as with a lot of the other places that we work on, is making sure that there's safe and clear vehicular and pedestrian circulation. And so being able to tie the, this development together from east to west in a manner that people can recognize and understand how they're going to get to where they'll land. And at the center of that is that town square area. Something that we noted in the, the previous planning exercise was that two-acre parcel that was set aside as a town square. It also identified different types of streets, one of which was a festival street that could be closed off during events. Others were the Main Street and other connective streets, such as Anderson Boulevard and others. And, and one of the things that we wanted to prioritize as we were looking at this is how could we allow that town square area to be something that stands on its own day to day, when it's families going out, getting ice cream, going out to eat, as well as during a larger community event? And so as you can see here on kind of the right and left sides of the screen, there's two little square markers that would serve as secondary entrances or exits into the development. And, and at the center, that central kind of charcoal gray color could be closed. And, and at the center, that central kind of charcoal gray color could be closed off as that festival street to create this larger walkable core. And so when you're looking at what we've got labeled as that town square as approximately one acre, that's really looking at the open space between the three residential buildings and those two restaurants that are on the north edge of it, as really this cohesive, always there, always flexible and usable community space. And then that could be expanded to reach across the street and touch those other four restaurant and retail buildings that are closer to 700 North, to really create a more vibrant destination that could be used by the community during events, markets, winter markets, and the like. We've preserved a larger pavilion space, which could be a stage, it could maybe have some auxiliary support elements with it, and just trying to leave flexibility built into that space so that what's needed for the development to work can stand on its own, but there's also opportunity for that space to really be crafted as something that works well for the community and balance kind of the vibrancy that you get with those residential units that are activating the space. You've always got people that are there on those edges, as well as what will happen within those restaurant spaces, outdoor dining opportunities, to really create an atmosphere that supports the goals of the community and finds and strikes that appropriate balance to really be a space that people within the, the city really feel familiar with. And so those are all elements that, as we look kind of into this, the subsequent pages, you see how all of those things push and pull against each other to really find that balance and really create opportunity for a sense of place, that third place that people are really yearning to find as they find a place to go between work and, and home as well. And so if you go to, go forward a couple of pages, we do have a comparison sheet, and this is what Dwayne was referring to, where we, we wanted to showcase a couple of places locally that people are familiar with, or maybe a little bit less familiar with. In the top left is Holiday Village, which is a newer mixed-use development. And, and you can see that red outline is generally the outline of that contiguous green space that we have identified on our site plans as that town square space. And so here you can see how that similar scale applies to other spaces up and down the Wasatch Front. And so here you can see that central green space, as well as that flexible common, where those repeating square patterns are, which is more of an urban space that can be used really well for markets or other events. To the right, you can see what's coming into place as the new Mill Creek Common, where Mill Creek City has their city hall, as well as more spaces that would be developed to the north, but this captures that existing area with that ice skating ribbon there in the center, as well as kind of a mixture of open space on the edges, as well as parking, where in this design, that kind of flexible festival street was really integrated into that hardscape and really blurs the lines between those two spaces. So it's a little bit more difficult to see with the rendering that we used. Going straight down into the bottom right is a, a new development in Riverton called Mountain View Village, that has this amenity zone that's framed by restaurants and movie theater and other shops. Within that space, there are shade structures over kind of an artificial turf lawn area, a water feature, and then a little food hall with four restaurants within it. And then panning to the bottom-left corner is Station Park, which of course has been in the, been open and functional for a number of years, and I think a lot of people are probably more familiar with it. There is a.
Farmington.
And that's in Farmington, essentially at the kind of interchange of Highway 89 and I-15 near Lagoon. And that is a space that has a fairly elaborate water feature as a focal point, but also has extra space for festivals and other elements with restaurants and a movie theater anchoring that space as well. We thought those were all great examples to show, like, within that open space area, some of the amenities that you might see from other developments and communities. Of course, we would like to see how we can allow that to grow and expand as the community's needs kind of push and pull it, so that it can support more than just the space that's confined within that, the landscaped green area.
Mike, would you go back to the site plan for a minute, so that we can put that into context? You see around the, the spaces that we haven't talked about yet are all of the retail spaces that can hold outdoor restaurants, restaurants with outdoor patios, people milling through those facilities we're very excited about. And it gives it, it gives it some, some shape there. And I might talk about residential, because as Mike said, that's going to be a conversation we're going to have here tonight, and we just as well talk about that right now. We believe that this residential will help to activate that space. I know, and the mayor has told us, that you have approved a lot of units around this, but this, that street that runs from west to east there through the project is what we sort of see as a promenade street, and that actually was prompted a little bit by the mayor. She'd like to see that happen, and it'll depend on how we dress it up with street furniture and create the design in there, but that will be a very active street. It will provide all sorts of pedestrian modes, bicycle modes, et cetera, to access the parking lots. But the people who live in and around this community will be able to walk there and, and access all of the facilities that are there. If you go to the one on the east, Mike, up by the track station, just, let me talk about that for a minute. I think that's the most, that's one of the most logical places that residential fits in this, because of the future advent of perhaps a track station, or at the very least a BRT line through there. And so we thought that that, that's a place to put residential. And at the mayor's request, and I think a couple of council members weighed in on this too, that we took buildings off of the tracks and would make that available for purchase if the BRT line ever comes through and the city wants to acquire that in there. In the meantime, it would work. And then there was one other thing in, in the code that Mike was talking about, and that is the setback from the residential, go back to the other, there we go. That residential is setback more than what your code requires, and those are four-story buildings. And as, as Mike said, we have plenty of landscaping that also meets your requirements. So we think we've come a long ways with the first plans that we came in to visit with you on. I think the mayor would say we've come a long ways. I don't know we've come far enough, but we certainly feel good about it. We feel good about the response we're getting from the retail community out there, and we're, our goal this evening is to, to get your input and see if we can't have staff or at your direction begin to work on a development agreement, because I think both sides need to know where we're going. We need a roadmap here, so that we can put this thing together and keep our international big-box tenant in place. They're anxious to know that we're making progress with you. We've been in touch with them, as well as Mike has as well. So we're, we're here to answer any questions you might have, unless Haley thinks I've missed anything.
Okay.
She runs the show back there. She's just pulling, she's just pulling strings, so you know.
You're just the eye candy, Dwayne. I get it.
Well, then, then we've got a long ways to go, I'll tell you that, Lincoln.
We've had some great conversations with Haley, and she really does. In, in our meetings, she sits at the table and Dwayne sits back.
Something maybe Michael and I can share. We did meet with UTA's strategic planner, one of their civil engineering designers, and a long-range planner about this quadrant here. And so we really are trying to identify, how can we save space for both the bus transit, as well as future tracks accommodations? And so they're looking at it with us, UTA, to help us plan, you know, like, what's an appropriate amount of space to accommodate some of those things? One of the things they brought up was that the bus might need to have kind of a pull-in potentially there, and so, you know, maybe the, we can talk about this layer, you know, if there's an ability to pull that building back from 700 North a little bit, a few more feet, but we're still getting feedback from them on that. So appreciate you kind of redesigning this a little bit, so that we have those potentials.
Well, and as you started the conversation, Mayor, this really is a partnership.
Yeah.
And I think the only way to guide us through this partnership is to, again, to put, put a plan on paper that encompasses these, these concepts, but has flexibility as we introduce retailers to it and things change, but we have, we have a guide.
Exactly. And I think that's one of the things here, council understands, but maybe just explain for those that are in the room or watching, is this concept is not necessarily the exact, you know, buildings are going to go, the retail buildings, you've expressed, depending on, hey, this restaurant needs a bigger spot, or we have this bank, or, you know, you don't have the, you haven't assembled all of the retail yet, so there's going to be potential flexibility of how the buildings might be. But this is kind of just setting them there as a, as a place, but the housing right now is a little bit more fixed, is what you're proposing somewhat.
Well, yeah, to a degree. I mean, I think we would like to know what the number is, so that we can go back and put some, some economics to this, because we're still working our way through that. We need to know where we're going, so that we can, we can put economics to this project and make sure that it works for us, as well as for the city. But I, I, I think that the key is to try and get to that point where we can begin to flesh something out that creates that partnership.
Okay, fair enough. Did you have any other?
Yeah. I, I. Greg's got some precedent images of that open space that we'd like to just share with the council in terms of these other things that have come together from time to time.
And so just to reiterate, this is a concept review, so we are in the process. This is a negotiation. This is a partnership, trying to find alignment, you know, where there's some push and pull still to be had here, and trying to find where we can meet.
Before I turn it over to Greg, if this plan were to happen, the way it's drawn, it'd be the first time in my 40-year career it's ever happened. So it's, it's not designed, and there are going to be some very significant moving parts here, but it's a place to start, so that we agree on the concept.
Yes, well said. Thank you.
As hard as we try to have, the first concept sticks, there's always some room for adjustment, so. These are all, we wanted to pull together a couple of, of images, and I, we enjoyed the beginning of the meeting today was all talking about character, and we happened to use that as one of the titles within our presentation of like, what is, how does this imagery represent kind of the character of this space? How does it react to and respond to the character of the community of Linden? So within this, we really wanted to just show how we want to craft these spaces, so that they can be flexible for the community, to be able to support a, a movie in the park, to be able to support a smaller event such as a class that's maybe on a walking tour or a family event, finding these little opportunities throughout, not just in the town center, but spaces where people can go and, and find a moment to themselves. So as we go ahead and page down to the next one, really looking for these amenities that really just support day-to-day life in a, in a way that will enrich the community and allow this to really become a space that people know that they can go to find that moment, whether that's with a, a change in quality materials, accommodation of just really nice and durable street furniture or bicycle racks, those elements that really just add to a space and give you flexibility within it. Go ahead and go down to the next page. And, and looking at how we can activate those edges, we noted that in the, the previous planning exercise, it had a, a 15-foot kind of street active zone between the facade of a building and the curb edge that could accommodate outdoor on-street dining or other amenities, and so that's something that we've tried to take note of as we've adapted some of the, the core values from that previous planning exercise to this, to really make sure that there was that flexibility and that opportunity for people to utilize the space in a different way and to really stick around and enjoy themselves, take in those amazing views of Mount Tempanogus, as well as being able to move through the street. And so as we've kind of laid out that initial pass at that main street that moves from west to east, leaving it wide enough that there could be accommodation for both lanes of travel, as well as potential bike lanes, we're showing on-street parallel parking instead of angled parking, just because it is a, a smaller barrier for people to be able to move through, and we feel like we're going to find a good balance for the overall parking based on uses. And currently, as we look at how we might utilize that on-street parking, that really would be as kind of a bonus for convenience and to be able to support some of the spaces that might exist within that town center area. Go ahead and go down. And then, again, looking at how can we offer other enhancements to the space that really make it appealing from the street as people are moving up and down 700 North? What is it that might pull them in? And one of the most effective ways to do that is with lighting at night and really show people that there's something else happening in that space as opposed to what they might experience in kind of a more typical configuration as far as a development's concerned. And so really leaning on that lighting, finding ways to allow that to be something that's, again, an enhancement to the space and to that overall experience, as well as providing a safe atmosphere for people and families to go. Two things that really draw people in, fire and water. Here we would be looking at these water features and fountains. How could that, what's the right thing? What is it that is either interactive enough, that people feel like they can kind of reach out and touch it without it becoming a splash pad? Like, what is that right balance here? And then fires, is it a small fire feature just for warming during the shoulder seasons? Is it something that's active all year, just to be able to, again, have that movement, that light? I know that every time we go camping, the last thing that ends up with every night is people are just kind of taking in that moment, enjoying watching those flames flicker. And so what can we do to, again, add that kind of extra layer of just character and warmth through these spaces? And I think we've got two more pages. Has anybody's ever seen, as you move through master plan communities or other developments, you see a myriad of signage, wayfinding, branding, elements that both support the, the space and help people understand where they're going, but is also maybe a reflection of the characteristics of Linden? And so as we look at a couple of, we've got two pages of just options, again, of, of signage, like announcing to people that there is something happening here. We've got examples from the Wasatch Front, as well as elsewhere, just to get kind of a feel for what works and what doesn't, as, as we're looking at a town center and really bringing in the community values into the space, whether that's leaning on a material that's locally available, or some other theme. Like, there's opportunity here for that, again, to be another nod into how, how this can really be a place for Linden.
I'm going to make one concluding comment, and then we'd sure like to hear from you. I'm glad we finished on this one, because where it says Brigham right there, I can see over the entrance to that plaza space, Linden Village, depending upon how it is you would like to do it. That strikes me, and, and it begins to set the tone for the rest of it. And Haley just whispered to me, you know, this site is not designed yet. All you've really got in front of you is a site plan, and there are hard lines on it, but we got to put texture to it, we got to put building types to it, we got to put windows to it, it's got to be, it's got to be designed with all the characteristics that, you know, our designers bring to the table, with your input. So if you have any other questions, we're happy to answer them. We're excited about where we are right now. We're excited to help you keep this international tenant in line, and, and to, to be able to help make that happen as well, because they've got to have some of the land that we're under contract to buy from the Andersons.
All right, council, this is your moment to ask questions or share thoughts. They're looking for feedback, and this is a potential collaboration.
Well, I'll start. This, this, the concept plan is very exciting, very well done. As a, I guess, retired builder now, I have to say I can picture kind of what things will be happening there. Have you thought about how you would phase the construction, west to east, the front to back? What are you kind of thinking? And that becomes the question, does residential happen, and then you wait and wait and wait for commercial, or how do you balance those two?
We don't know the answer to that yet, quite honestly. We're in, we're in a market right now where we couldn't start this residential if we wanted to, given the current interest rates and costs. And it's going to depend on how many of these retailers come to the table and how fast. I, I don't know that we have, we haven't put a, we haven't put a building plan together yet, but we could, we could begin to develop that if we have your buy-in on this kind of a plan to try and put some economics to it. But maybe one portion of the residential goes, and, you know, there's going to be a, a number of retailers. We've already had a lot of people who want those pads. We want people who want to be on that green space to come in and build sit-down restaurants, and so it's going to take us a little while to ferret that out. But we need to know that we've got your buy-in on this plan in order to be able to execute it, if that makes sense, or something close to it.
I think for me, a year or so ago, I found myself in Boulder, Colorado, and they had a dedicated space where they'd taken streets, blocked them off, repaved, created this walkable area that was just beautiful, and, you know, we just, our hotel happened to be on the corner, and we walked over, and so I haven't seen anything like this. Lincoln and I took the frontrunner up to Farmington Station.
Okay.
Today, this morning, because I wanted to get a vision of what the possibilities are. I'm a very visual learner, so looking at this means nothing as far, but what you've shown me as far as what you'd like to incorporate, that makes me feel a little better. The walkable space, I think, is really, for me, I, I can only speak for myself, but to have an area where you can walk, and that's with the Farmington Station, there was just that one area, and you showed the, you know, the juxtaposition of that green space here on that. But to create a space where people can gather, that was, that was really important. I've seen too many. I've seen too many places that are utilitarian looking and, and that's, we're looking, I noted the term iconic corridor. And I, I really believe that once you hit that, that Linden border there and you head toward Geneva, we want it to be something that people, and you mentioned kind of that, turn their head and go, oh, that's a different kind of place. I want to go there. We want it to be something that's attractive, that will draw people. It's really important that the, that what we bring in there, the, the commercial properties are, are, you know, enticing and anyway, that's, so the walkable part is really important to me as far as that.
It's become a much more important part of the development world too. We've done several apartment communities, just simply apartment communities lately, and the walkability of them and, and to the surrounding neighborhoods is very important, which is what we've tried to at least visualize here. We wish, and I'm sure you may wish in the end that we had a little bit more depth here, but we don't. And that was one of the problems with attracting a major tenant here to begin with was we go to Smith's and we go to Macy's and we go to those grocery stores. And there's just not the depth to accommodate their store and their parking as well.
Right.
So we're looking for more of a boutique, a boutique grocer to play off of the, the large tenant that, that seems to be at the table right now.
Kind of to Steve's point, that one of the notes that I'd made here is how do we invite people to the town square? And I really liked the end of your presentation. That was a very powerful, well-done. Whether it's fire or water, or both.
Both.
So, so that part was well-done. Thank you.
And that's part of the, part of the final design. It is that that'll all kind of come together in a, in a theme. It'll be themed from Anderson Boulevard as far as you can go. So it will be, there'll be a theme through the whole thing. That's why he makes the big bucks.
All right, counsel. I think as you know, a lot of this is flexible, but in order to move forward, we have to work out just some core understandings of, of some basic fundamental things about this project. To make sure we can move forward on, you know, there's kind of the 30,000-foot view you're seeing here. But there's some core fundamental things that we need to, you know, know that if we're moving forward. And that is obviously the central space. They've, they've set aside this space. We've talked about certain elements that we would like to have there that activate it, that have an entertainment value. And I think that's, you know, there's, there, there might be some amenities that we might say, hey, are these enough amenities? When we talked about like fixed, you know, features and amenities that have like game kind of situation. You know, there's going to be costs involved. You know, if we, if we say, you know, if we wanted a skate ribbon, for example, which I'm not suggesting, we don't really have the space for like what Mill Creek has done or Harriman has done, Bountiful has done, but those cost a lot. So I think with the partnership here, they're going to say, okay, we have to pencil to a certain level what we're getting in housing doors and, and how that trades off with upgraded amenities or where will the city participate potentially based on what we want. So some of the things that I've mentioned, they've, they've added the elements here. So the extra wide sidewalks along the Primateod, you said that was 15 feet? Perfect. And I think some of the additional things that, that are in those elements is the buildings need to have not just your, you know, if you, I think one of the council members just today we were chatting, he said, you know, this, a place that will not be named. They've got lots of great stuff there, but I only go for like that one thing and then I leave. We're trying to create a, a space here that speaks social, cultural. You know, you want to stay and hang out or, or choose that as your destination with your family to go spend a few hours or a date night. And so that's where I think all the, it's going to be so exciting to work with you all on the design elements of the buildings and all the fixtures and, you know, the landscaping and all that. But some of the core things we have to get first across the finish line is what number of housing doors? And how, how that may speak in the overall project? And then in that central space is what we're seeing here. Is there anything additional we, we counsel would like to see there that is not present at this time? If that gives any clarification.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to know a starting point, right? You've given us a starting point for residential units. You've given us kind of a wide variety of potential amenities in that town square. And I, and I think that the residential and the town square end up being the two big pieces of this puzzle that, that eventually lead us to a win, 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 which is what we've all wanted and what I think we all want. I, I guess help us understand, you know, with, with the amount of units that you're requesting, which is a lot, which is, as Mike said really well, the reason we have to come together because it was never intended to be a residential space. I, I guess what amenities would be part of a, you know, a package in that town square that has 370 units? I should have done the math.
375, I think.
375. I guess is what I'm trying to understand. What I'd, what I'd hate to do is, well, and, and maybe the answer is none of them. And, and what I see here is, is what's there. And if, if we would like to have a skating ribbon or the water and fire, then, then that's going to need to be negotiated through more units. Help us understand where you're at and what's being presented today.
I, I appreciate where you're coming from. I don't think we're here to negotiate for more units. I think we're at our number, 375. I think we're going to have to have a very serious discussion about what this costs for everybody. And I think the council needs to know right now that we are upside down in this deal we're making with the international retailer. And we'll be looking to see how to solve that problem as well. I know that you have come so far with them as well, but right now what they're asking us to do makes it so this project does not pencil today. So we're going to have to have those conversations sooner rather than later about how we make this thing come together as a group. And I, I don't want to go away thinking, you know, we're just going to get you to pay for a stage and it's all going to be fine. Again, we're not negotiating for more units, councilman. We're, we're, we're trying to make this come together with, with a placemaking that everybody wants to have happen.
Do you envision, how much partnership are you looking for the city on that town gathering area?
We need, we needed your buy-in here. We have, we have a fellow on our side. We've hired a fellow who negotiates these, these development agreements with cities. He's very competent, has a very good reputation. He knows Mike. And he knows Adam, and he's anxious to get involved in that, but there was no point in having him start that discussion until we had some buy-in on something close to a plan. So if you understand that we're at 375 units and we're going to work out the rest of this, this, this retail space and more may come, depending upon, I think Mike hit the, the nail on the head perfectly. Parking is key to these retailers. They will not come if they can't park. And so right now we've shown what we think works. We may get a couple of users that are not quite so parking-heavy and park, parking-intensive and be able to bring some more retail to the table. We just don't know where that's going to go. But we're not, we're not coming back to the table to negotiate for more units. And as long as we're on the, the economics of it all, understand that the Andersons want to sell 40 acres. And they want to sell it at one time. And we want to buy it, but we need to know that there is light at the end of that tunnel when we put that investment down. And we're patient. We can make it happen. But we need to know that it comes together in the end, if that makes sense to you.
And just a, a further note, for those that are listening and, and following this. The state legislature now requires communities, cities, whenever we do our retail projects, like this, this big box retailer that we're working with, we now are required to have housing as part of the, the package that we do with them. So that is, your state, state legislator's passed that recently. So mixed use, some, some level of variety of housing options. So we, we do have a number of units we're required by law at this point to provide. So.
Yeah, that's if we give an incentive to this big box, then we're required for so many square feet of retail space.
That passed not too long ago. So mixed use, like you said, does activate a space. It creates some vibrancy, finding that right balance. I think also the balance to the existing neighborhood and how that is going to impact them, I think is something we need to be very cognizant of as well. And so I've talked with a number of people, planning commissioners as well as people that live out in this, in the Anderson Farms community as well as the Fieldstone Homes. And I can tell you that the, I think the, the townhomes part of it, I don't think anyone has any issues with. The, the multifamily, they are, they have said, we're glad that that's not right to the edge where it could be that there's that buffer of, you know, 150 feet with the, the parking. And then obviously you would be planting a row of, of nice trees to kind of blend there. But I am hearing people nervous about four stories for the multifamily. And so I also am concerned about the four stories, just how that, the human scale of that as you're in that space for the town square, how that kind of plays with the massing and, and how that might speak as you're enjoying that space. So, you know, sometimes does, I had one, one person say, you know, it's really about the design. If these are square, boxy, kind of what we see in some other communities where developers just kind of do straight up and it's not particularly interesting. I think we're going to need, the community is going to want to see that these are beautiful, that they have classic design, that they have kind of those extra architectural features that make them appealing and aesthetically pleasant. They're not just the, you know.
Balconies and architectural relief and, and so forth.
Yeah, awnings and fixtures and, and articulation and, and all that. So it would be helpful if we could see maybe some concepts in that regard. Because sometimes a number of doors can sound really intense. But then how you design it and how it coordinates with everything else can sometimes really soften that. So I think finding the right balance there is going to be really important. I'm not sure, you know, that's, that's probably the hardest spot right now is, is what I just mentioned to figure out.
I'm not surprised by that. And I understand where those people in Anderson Farms are coming from. But if you look at those precedent images that Greg showed, you'll see that there's a lot of buildings much higher than four stories that surround those spaces in some cases. And that's what activates it. And that's what people sitting out on their balconies or out on their stoops, if they're on the ground floor, you know, participating in, in whatever's happening out there on a given day. So we'll be sensitive to that. If you lop this, if you lop the story off of these four-story buildings, I can tell you the economics are going to go the wrong way. So we've got it, we've got to figure out how to make that work. But it's not that there's not a solution there somewhere, but we're sensitive to that. We hear it. And we'll take a crack at it.
Two, probably the biggest concerns I'm struggling with, Dwayne, was your comment about you're taking a big hit, right? And that you need Linden to step forward and cover up there. That was something, you mentioned something to Adam as we were leaving the last meeting, that then he chatted with us about. And, and that concerns me, right? I'm a new guy. I, I don't understand everything. I know sales tax is a big deal. Your follow-up comment is with the other commercial that's going on around us, there is only a certain tolerance for this. And I get that. But so then I, right? And, and Mayor's got some ideas with grants and this and that. But it's going to be very important to us that we protect Linden, protect our property taxes, right? We've been very successful at having lowest property taxes in the state, right? I don't know if, well.
I, I wouldn't expect anything else, councilman. I, I, that's exactly what I would expect from a, a responsible city council. But that's why we'd like to start this discussion on the development agreement, to work out these architectural standards within it and to address where these shortfalls are and have you understand what's going on on our side of the ledger and we on yours.
So, so I've been doing a bunch of field, a bunch of field trips. Steve and I went up to Farming Station. You showed Farmington Station. Can, can we access any of those?
Yeah, we've got them right here.
Start with the email that I sent you, if we can. Yeah, 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 yeah. The, the Farmington Station picture you just showed us was the green space, right? So there's talk about the walkable, shoppable. But I didn't see that in, in, in what you had, right? I saw green space. I see green space for an apartment complex, but then I see other stuff outside. Does, does that make sense?
It doesn't.
Okay.
If we could go back to that plan, that.
So just hold on this just for a minute. So Farmington Station, I'm going to come up here. Right, we took our tracks and then we came here and then we walked along these shops. You can walk to them.
Sure.
You can walk to them, but that's not this. Does that make sense? This has the shops on both. This is the walkable, shoppable. This is 625 feet from here to here. We're only dealing with, can you go to the, yeah. And this is 1,000 feet and ours is by 2,000, right?
Part of the depth problem.
Yeah.
For, for that part that's off of the international. So I, I'm just a little, you, you also showed Greg in your pictures, lights across a, a, a walkway. And you talked about 700 North. We're not putting lights across 700 North.
And never, we never envisioned that, but okay.
Right. This to me, when I look at that now, it concerns me. We've got a green space for these residential units. But if I'm in that green space and I decide I need to, to hit one of these other shops, there's not a ton of them, right? It's, you know, I'm walking, you can walk to it, but it's a not walkable. Shops on both sides, right?
Go ahead, Greg.
Pull up, pull up some of the pictures that Steve. Yes, Steve, they're good. Yeah, you talked about the fireplace, Farmington Station, the fireplace. Let's just flip through those, right, the signs.
There you go.
Right? So some of the things that we called out were the signs, right, the lights. But this, this is walking, shopping all the way along, right? And your green space is right here in the middle. I don't know how we can take, yeah, let's just keep showing Steve pictures. Because you guys, you guys gave me a topo view and then you show some pictures.
Sure.
So here's, right, and this one Steve said, take this picture. Called out these, these, right, these guys right here.
Yeah.
Right? And, and I think we can all get on this page. But again, this is places that you walk out to. Go back to the, the Farmington Station. Sorry, Mike, I should just take the mouse. Right? Again, you can walk out to a bunch of different places. And, and you showed this in yours. You showed just the green space, but you've got to zoom out to see all of this. So we're at 500 feet. So if you wipe out the middle, you know, is there, is there room? Are we sure there's not room to have more shops? And, and, and like you said, capacity for more? We've got some really delicate numbers to try and balance between your sacrifices that you're having to make. We've maxed with ours. So I just, and, and you said this is a concept, yours is a concept. So where did that, where does that concept need to take the next step?
And I, I will say, using Station Park as an example, it, it's really two centers in one. You've got kind of the strip center around the edges. You've got this massive parking lot separating it from more of that lifestyle center at its core. One of the examples that we wanted to point to, particularly with that central green space, was really more to show people the scale of space of amenities and elements that you might find kind of at the heart of the town center. One of the things that as we were looking at the layout plan, and so if you'd be able to zoom in, Mike, on the this west parcel plan that we had in our PDF. And you can see where we've wanted to solve some of the problems, Lincoln, that you discovered at Station Park where it kind of fails the community as far as walkability goes. And so as you start on 1700 West on the left-hand side of the sheet, moving to the east, on both sides of that main street, we have on both sides of that main street, we have generous pathways. And so on the south side, we have this walkway that connects consistently all the way across from 1700 West to 1400 West in front of the grocer, in front of the retail, the town center, the residential areas into the townhomes. You can see where there's some smaller pockets, park amenity space. But then also on the north side of the road, there's a wider, more generous landscape buffer currently in the plan that accommodates more of a pedestrian experience for walking almost within a linear park at its current scale. And of course, as you talk about retail restaurant uses and the balance of making sure that they have adequate parking, some of those things will get pushed and pulled accordingly. But one of the things we wanted to do is find ways to make sure that this would be a space where people that live and work here as well as from the surrounding communities could be connected to it and find ways to walk through it safely. And so if you zoom in on that townhome area, Mike, and kind of humor me a little bit there on the north side, you can start to see that meandering walkway on the north side of that Main Street Road making an east-west connection from 1700 West across to that central town square area. And there is room for, and just for the sake of time, we didn't illustrate every possible walkway that we envisioned and kind of preserved space for. But there would be room for people to move north and south towards 700 North as well as those retail and restaurant pads to make sure that it was truly a walkable, safe space and that people did not have to be or forced into walking into the vehicular area or the parking lot. And so trying to find a balance of that for both the residents that live there as well as the community at large as they visit this space, they find themselves parking once and then walking throughout the space as opposed to parking and then going somewhere and then driving somewhere else and parking again.
Just to follow up on that, Lincoln, we see things just a little differently. I know how you see that green space as connected to the apartments, but it really isn't. Those apartments are highly amenitized, both the clubhouse and a pool. That belongs to them. They have their own space. That's for them to walk out and use at night if there's an event going on. But we see that green space tied more to the central stage area than we do to those apartments on either side. If you've visited some of the apartment communities that we have developed, that green space is much larger than we, than we build in a typical apartment community. So that was, that was in an effort to bring it all together in that central plaza area, not for the, not for the residents because those buildings are highly amenitized as it is.
Can you go back to Greg's, your pictures? I think we all love those. I think we all agree with those. I'm sorry, the, the, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm looking at this and I'm trying to map that to where I've been, right? We've got shops, right? We've got walkable all along here. I go back to the concept, right? So it's just a concept. I don't see this anywhere.
The little Main Street Boulevard.
Go back to our plan and let Greg explain that.
And this is where it gets into the balance of density. And so how, how can we find that balance here? And I would say that that scene that you just pointed to is something that you would see in that central core area, connecting the pavilion through the town square and then that central road up to 700 North. Is that that would be that area where you would have these buildings with their storefronts on the street, whether it's restaurants or retail pads. And that amenitized streetscape would be along that section for sure. And then depending on what happens with the grocer and if that is a kind of boutique grocer or if it becomes a series of other pads, maybe that opportunity could also start to spread out and adjust and adapt the organization of the retail in those areas.
I think what Councilmember Jacobs might be alluding to is right now we're seeing a lot of separated footprints and maybe having more of a sense of continuity in the, in the building streetscape. Especially the commercials that have isolated commercial, 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 commercial. Maybe creating that sense of I'm on a little, little Main Street promenade and I'm going to have, you know, anyway, is that there?
That's exactly right. Because I think you're, I think you're residential people are going to love this. But for somebody coming down here, I'm going to drive here and I'm, I'm going to walk. Right? What, what am I going to see along the way?
I think it's no different than Farmington Station. If you park up there by that restaurant and you want to see what's going on in the promenade, all that parking outside that area that you pointed to is that far away.
Yeah, you park outside, but once you walk in.
And walk down the promenade.
You feel like you're on a little street in Paris or something with the little, the little stores on either side of you. And so this doesn't really present along the promenade, a sense of like, I'm in a little shopping district, a little, little Main Street. So just a interesting design concept.
Greg's, I think he's got to make a point as well. Those orange or red buildings that you see, those are multi-tenant buildings. So you're walking past three or four shops or restaurants or whatever. You're not walking by one. Those are going to be divided up individually and you're going to be walking by storefronts that are there. And there'll be individual proprietors in those shops. So it's, it's similar. Remember, we only have 500 feet of depth to work with here. And so we're limited in terms of the expandability of it versus Farmington Station.
And I think as you look at which retailers and restaurants are interested in the space, how many of them would be willing to move farther away from 700 North and all of the vehicle traffic and exposure that they have there to be more into the center and finding that right balance? So that like, there is opportunity, of course, to move things around and play with that as we understand more about who those tenants could be and make sure that we're playing to the strengths of the community as well as the center. Understand what you're saying as far as like those scenes and that imagery and finding ways to make that applicable here. I think there's opportunity for that, particularly in this central town square space. And then it's really would, at that point, be a matter of like, can we shift something a little bit farther from 700 North or not? Like, does that keep someone engaged and interested? Or does that lose their attention because now they don't have all of that vehicle traffic and opportunity for signage right next to them?
But too, we are here to, to gain an understanding of where you're coming from and trying to explain what we have in front of you. We're not arguing with you. This is not to be argumentative. It's just to, to exchange information that perhaps if you're, if you're, I'm putting words in your mouth now. If you're comfortable with proceeding to a document that outlines the particulars that need to go in a development agreement so that we know when we're, where we're going when it comes time to close with the Andersons and make the deal with the international tenant. Because right now we don't know and neither do you, and that's what we're trying to get.
All right, Council, any other feedback?
I have a question for Mike. What type of, I guess built into that agreement would be some sort of guarantees for us to, to have the commercial we are desiring in exchange for the residential, right? And we could, similar to what we've done over here on State Street, we could even control timing if we needed to, if we felt like it was pertinent.
Yeah, I mean, we would definitely want a number saying, you know, we have to have at least 87,000 square feet of commercial. And, you know, yeah, we can get into specifics like that and timing.
Can we get into specifics of who the international big box is?
Not without their participation, but there's that potential.
Okay.
Okay. One other thing, and that is Haley just pointed out to me that we see these as a maximum in terms of number of residential units, but a minimum in terms of retail and commercial units. So if there's more demand and there is more tenants that can fit in this, we're going there. That's, that's economics to us. That's, that, that falls to the bottom line. So if there's another building we can squeeze in on 700 North or we can squeeze another building in along the promenade between the, between the east end of the parking, excuse me, east end of the apartments and, and the, right there, then, then we're going to do it. Again, we're trying to establish a minimum of residential and a maximum, a minimum of commercial and a maximum of residential, if that makes any sense.
I think it does. And I appreciate that comment, you know, as I've gone back and forth on this. I, you know, when we put this road in, in fact, Mary, I think he just left. He was part of the council that bonded to put this road in. You know, the idea was never to have residential on here. And yet that's how much the world has changed over the last 12 years.
Twenty.
Yeah. It, and so I guess, I hope that you understand where we're coming from, from the standpoint of we are really excited about this and yet we need to try our best to, you know, this corridor means a lot to a lot of people. I know it means a lot to the mayor as she and I and others have gone out and talked to the community and promised during campaigns of, hey, this is going to be a place where you're going to want to take your wife on Friday night. This is going to be such a cool place. And I, to see it starting to come together is really, really cool. You know, I, I think, you know, I'll speak for myself, not for the rest of the council. I'm ready to move to that next stage. I'm ready to get a document in place. There are some things to work through. There's some parking issues, there's the sewer issues, the residential. And so I hope you'll hear us, you know, I agree with the mayor. If there's a way for us to, to look at three stories on, on that, to potentially put it somewhere else. If there's, you know, let's be creative. If there's ways that we can minimize residential and still meet the economics, let's be creative. You have a council that's willing to be creative with you. And at the same time, we understand that you're, you're running a business and that the economics will come into play. And so I, I think as we enter into the next stage and look towards a document, know that, that the sticking point for us is always going to be that residential and making that town square what we've kind of committed to our residents that we want it to be and what they want it to be. And we're making great strides there. We really are. And so I, I think that's where I'm at. I, I really am excited. This just feels as close as we've been for 12 years to getting something that, that, that just everyone can be proud of. Again, a win, win, win. And so I'm hoping that we can work out some of these details so that the rest of the community can feel like it is what we want it to be. That's kind of where I'm at.
And I apologize, Dwayne. I didn't realize we had multiple retailers in these and that there can be.
No, we're just changing information.
It's super hard for me to look above, right? When I look at Farmington Station, it's like, oh, it just looks like a regular mall to me, right? But then when I walk through and I see, oh, this is someplace I want to be. This is someplace I want to walk through. When grandpas got to babysit grandkids, this is where I can take them. They cannot play in the fountain, they're not supposed to. And then we can walk around, we can go get warm by the fire and we can, right, I can babysit there.
No, no offense taken at all, Councilman Jacobs, because what's missing in this is all the street furniture, all of the playground equipment, the other things that go with this, the, the, the lighting features that go up and down the promenade. There's a lot missing from this, but we just don't, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like. So I appreciate where you're coming from and we're trying our best to get there. Councilman White says they've been waiting for 12 years. The Andersons on the back row have been waiting for 80 years. So let's, you know, we're just.
Oh, come on, they love farming.
They've been very patient and they've been really good partners. And I think this is a three-way partnership that's going to have to work. It may be a four-way partnership. There may be the international retailer that's got to be involved here as well to make this thing come together.
One thing on the height too. So, you know, we, you, we do require a wall to go up between residential and commercial. And that, that'll be a seven-foot wall. You'll have a land, so from that seven-foot wall to this nearest building is about 95 feet, if I measured that correctly. And a four-story building, our height maximum is 48 feet. And so you'll have a, the residents have a seven-foot wall, at least 10 feet of landscaping, you know, and then parking and some more landscaping for the building. And so this, this is the closest building, I believe, at 95 feet. This one here was at 154 feet, the one on the left.
And something that we talked about in other developments sometimes that are abutting residential, you know, there's things that we can talk about, like on that southern border, could you plant evergreen trees that are fully leafed out year-round that, you know, are beautiful and create a sound and a light and a, you know, visual buffer, you know? The type of species that are chosen there that the residents can appreciate.
Discussion for sure.
Yeah, those are all part of the creativity to make everyone play the space.
But what you have there now, just remember, you have openings that people can see through. And if you put a solid wall of trees there, that may defeat the purpose of it. So we'd have to, we'd have to plant them in a purposeful way.
Yes, yeah.
I'll just say, I just echo what Jake just said. I thought he said it very well. I'd be ready now to just move forward just to see that next, you know, level and.
As well, excited to see what next steps can be. Well, if it's okay with you, we would have our attorney take a crack at the first development agreement because he was waiting to see what you were going to do with this. And I think we've heard your feedback. I think it needs to be methodical. It needs to be, but we need to know that we have something that we can do with this property when we have to close with the Andersons and with the international retailer.
All right.
You've been great. Thank you very much. I think this can be a very good partnership. We appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know we have some residents here. This is not a legislative action. This was just first-stage preliminary kind of informational. But I know there are some residents here who may want to share feedback or comments as well about this. Are we still holding the closed session after this or are we adjourning? Okay. Due to that, I would entertain just very brief, concise, not repetitive, you know, questions or comments, things that can help us as council, what are some of the things that we could, in our talks with this, to make this work? So if you could go ahead and just state your name.
Mayor, we should probably have him come up to the.
Okay, yeah, we'll have you come up to the, here, yeah.
He's walking up. One thing also that we didn't mention during this presentation, that we are actively working on a traffic signal at Anderson Boulevard.
Yeah, the signal's coming soon.
And 700 North, UDOT is, is ready to move forward. We're just, we've got one holdout property owner that we're working with right now than that. UDOT's anxious to get that light in.
All right, thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name's Justin. Thank you for, for having us and thank you for being here tonight. Full transparency, I am a neighbor of the Anderson Farms neighborhood. And this plan has circulated throughout our neighborhood. So a quick comment would be the height, Mayor, you're absolutely correct, is, is of concern in the neighborhood. We understand that's an ongoing conversation. But one question we have, we noticed the Linden City requirement is two parking stalls per unit. Castle Woods proposing 1.8. And we notice there is access into our neighborhood from the development. Our, pedestrian access. Our concern would be our neighborhood becoming that overflow for what the plan doesn't accommodate. So we, we understand there will be development on land at some point, you know, we, we all know that. But we ask that we don't become part of that development and live within that development.
So you're concerned about people parking in your area then walking through?
Absolutely.
What, I'm just curious about your desire for access yourself from your neighborhood into that area. Is that, how important is that?
We, we, from my understanding, from who I've all spoken with, we're totally okay going around. That road to the, to the east is a very easy, simple walk. Our mailboxes are there on the east.
That's good to know.
So if we're going to our mailbox, we can easily make it. We, we don't need that walking path to connect us. It would, it would become parking. Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And for those that make comments, if you, if there's something that's already been stated, just, we can hear it once and that's great if, just to, for, to keep it brief.
Mayor, council members, developers, my name's Richard Radstone. And thank you for, Michael, for mentioning the traffic signal. It may be redundant, but we were in a community that had a similar situation and it was with just a McDonald's as far as traffic flow on a singular street, as well as witnessing another development that was called The Commons. It was like kind of a multi-use development on a busy area that had two lanes both ways. And again, this was in Los Angeles. I know density's different, but everything still scales. And I'm not a traffic planner. I don't understand traffic flows and all that. But I do know that something of this scale, and I think it's cool, is going to generate a lot of traffic. And what does that traffic look like? What studies are being done? And what does that traffic look like? What studies are being done to see what's gonna happen on, um, again, I'm new here, but 700 North? And even with the McDonald's, we started to see things, um, people coming through our street and our neighborhoods very fast. You know, and we had children playing and all that sort of stuff. So, we worry about a traffic density, a safety issue, and how are you gonna make that flow work? So, forgive me if I'm redundant on that. Also, with the entertainment, again, which I think is cool, a part of the development by where we were, there was a, a big park that had movie night. There was a Costco a few blocks away from this center. And even the volume increased. Now, I, I'll go over there, I'll enjoy movie night and all that, but what controls do we have with our larger-scale events with parking, traffic density, even volume? So, just wanted to bring those points up for consideration and compliment all of you for the teamwork that you're doing. I know we're talking about attacking it from four fronts, but there's also a fifth front, which is just the local community of the neighborhood around there. There's lots of families that have different opinions, pro and con on that, but just concerned about our safety. Um, and what's gonna happen is the density of this increases. So, just wanted to put that on the record.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, come forward.
You new here?
Uh, my name is Scott Thompson. Just looking at this development, I like overall that we're moving forward on this. There's something there, but a few things I, few things I, I, I noted during, during the presentation is the reverse L pavil-, um, apartments. I believe they're probably a little bit too close that, to that park area. If we could somehow move those east and maybe taper that building from four down to three or two as it gets closer to the central area, that would, it feels like that's gonna be overlooking, overshadowing our, our central park area. The, the promenade, I see those two buildings going north on the promenade. I'd love to see those lengthened to add more of what Lincoln was talking about. And in regards to the, uh, the neighbors' concerns, I think if we had special events there, we could, since that is an individual gate, we could gate that off during large special events to deter people from parking in the neighborhood. So, that's just my, a few comments. I, overall, I like it, but I think we need to pull that residential away so it's not overshadowing the central area. And then lengthen the promenade to give us more of that feel. But overall, I'm, I'm pleased at what's, it, it is a great starting point.
Planning Commissioner right there, for those who are unaware.
My name is Kristi Nguyen. And, again, I'm in Anderson Farms. Um, so, I guess my biggest question is those two apartment complexes that can go up to four stories. How many, between the townhomes and those apartments, how many more residents are we gonna have in that space that takes up that much room? Because I know there's a whole nother area over there, which isn't my concern. My concern is what's in that.
I believe that would be.
170 units in the apartments and 37 townhomes.
So, over 200 more people backing up to us. Okay, thanks.
Unit. There will be more people than that.
That, that, well, correct. Let's even correct that, because every unit, two bedrooms or what have you. But yes, thank you, you're right. 200 more residences within.
All right, come forward, yes.
My name is Stephen Doan. I live in Anderson Farms. Actually, I have a little different opinion about the residential and the pathway than most of my neighbors probably. But I want my kids to be able to afford to live in, in Linden. So, the, I, I know the, the buildings are high, but I want them to have a place to live. I want them to live close to me. So, I appreciate that we are making space for that. Um, and the second thing is, I actually, I understand the parking issue. We already have a parking issue in that neighborhood. Because we have some residents that are actually violating some city ordinances. But, um, I actually do like that entrance there. One of the big issues in that area is to get out on my bike, any, like, for example, to get on the Linden Heritage Trail, there's not really a safe way for me to do that today. I can either ri- ride on 700, which is really dangerous because there's no shoulder at the train tracks. Or I can go to 500 and the exits onto Geneva and wait for a large enough gap to shoot across. And then the only other option for me to get to the Heritage Trail is to go over the overpass on the freeway and then get on the road that goes by the dump and connect there where it's near the dump. So, while we're developing this area, I really hope that we find a way to get, a way to get across Geneva safely. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sidna Graff. Um, I'm excited to have this near my home overall, and I thank you for working on this town center. I think it's a great concept. I do have concerns. Um, some of them have already been mentioned, so I won't mention them again. But, um, I personally like the path. I know that parking could become an issue, but I think we just have to monitor that and issue tickets. But, well, of course, we can't, but, um, I do look at that town center, the square right there, and I see the apartments surrounding it. And I am concerned that it just becomes a big dog park for the people who live in the apartments. Because not all dog owners are very careful with their dogs. There's a lot of great dog owners, but there's some that aren't. So, that was just my thought that hasn't been mentioned, that that could become a, a dog park that maybe is not intended for that use.
I'm Curtis Graff. And, um, I, I just wanted to say, I second the opinion on the, uh, those big residential, the 48-foot possibly, uh, residential, um, structures there. I would support moving those farther away from, from the town center. I, I'd feel like I'd almost be encroaching a little bit on the residents who are living, who are living there, but as far as a population coming in to enjoy that town center, it's like, you know, those, those residential buildings are just right there. And so, I, I would rather see those, you know, moved farther away from the town center.
Appreciate that comment. I, I compare this a lot to the Ashtons over in University Place, and they, they do have a couple of spots. And I've, I'll be honest with you, I've had that same thought of, oh, can I even go there? Is that open to the public or are they specific? That's a good comment, and, and certainly something for us to think about as we, I, I mean, we want the, we want the community there. We want it to be a town square, so appreciate that.
All right. Well, we appreciate your time and your feedback, and, uh, please feel free to contact any of us. We want this to be a, really a gem for Linden City. We're, we're kind of in this together to create something really dynamic, really special, something that we can be proud of and, and, and be a place to gather and be connected together. So, we'd love to hear from you.
If I can make one more comment, too. Um, in, in regards to traffic signals, we're also, we'll have a traffic signal that we're working on with UDOT and Union Pacific that will go, uh, here, is that right? Yeah, fi- at 500 North and Geneva Road. And so, that's been in the works. We're, we've got some things to get through Union Pacific first, but there'll also be another traffic signal at that intersection.
No, when he says Union Pacific, that means 10, 15, it means trouble.
We're, we're closer than that. Michael, could you scroll out? I did have one.
That's optimistic.
So, one of the things I wanted to share, too, is there was a, a concern about, will people come through the neighborhood to get to, you know, where will the traffic real, you, you had a question about traffic. In the portion that's gonna have the, 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 the big box potentially there, we've already designed with them that behind that, there will be no alley or uh, back of the commercial building that can have trucks or garbage. It's gonna be like a forest. They're just gonna have a big green space, no lights back there. And then there will be a road, a complete road as a buffer. And then where the homes begin again with, with Anderson Farms, that Ivory is building, those homes will, their backyards will face. So, it's not really, here, yes, thank you. Well, those will all be backyards. And so, if you look at that, if anyone comes from Geneva, say, to come up to the town square, it's not really gonna come through anyone's residential front, front yard. So, we've tried to carefully design that with, with, and collaborating with all of them. So, hopefully, whatever traffic is drawn to, to come in from outside your neighborhood, they really will have no reason to go into your actual home areas. They're gonna have very clear places to, to flow in and out that shouldn't impact that. So, hopefully, that's helpful a little bit. Because I know there's been some chat with the neighbors about that, so, yes.
I guess it's not so much the retail, it's the concerns more the, the, the residential, right? If they're only given 1.8 stalls, how many people actually have?
So, that's a parking versus, yeah, traffic movement, okay. Okay. All right.
Great.
Yep. Very good. Thank you all. Um, we are now going to move on to, uh, item number 11. And this is a closed session where the city council will be discussing potential purchase or sale of real property.
Thanks for coming.
And we will go ahead and take a five-minute recess, council, before we go into the closed session.
Because he's got the book. He knows the book. And he's gonna show us where it says it. You want me just to ignore the book? Can I get a letter from the governor telling me?
Yeah, please waive this building.
Please waive this code. Appreciate you thinking about those things.
Oh, I don't know. You just never wanna be on the outside.
I don't know, you just never wanna be on the outside.
It's just the, it's my horse trap, I just grabbed.
I thought you were taking the last thing of chips together.
Healthy, that's a healthy.
The later the meeting goes, the less.
I've got this story, I was like, do I buy those crack?
I was like, well, I'll just share.
Nice.
You guys need that when you get to the early, like, going the road discussion.
Hopefully it was good.
Good to see you.
It's good to see you.
You better take that home, buddy.
Me?
You got the kids.
I'm always like, those are new.
It's not, it's not, I'm not gonna, yeah.
No, I'm not gonna.
How was the field trip, buddy? Oh, what are you talking about, dude?
I can't.
What do you give it? I'm having guys watch as Lincoln.
I think my favorite part of everything was just the pictures of Steve.
He didn't even edit them. I mean, come on, I would edit them, so he's at least feeling like Steve.
I thought you were looking really bad.
That wasn't editing, it's my.
We went on a field trip, Steve gives me all these comments, and then here he says nothing. Like, what about her comments?
Average view, 23 minutes.
Okay, everybody, are we ready to do this? All right, council, we're now on item number 11. I would entertain a motion and a roll call to enter into our closed session.
A little better than I did last time. I make a motion to the city council to go into a closed session to discuss the potential purchase or sale of real property and pending or possible litigation for Utah Code 52-4-205 and all those other numbers.
All right, start on my left with the roll call.
Steve Stewart.
Hi.
Hi, yeah.
Jake Hoyt, aye.
Aye.
Van Broderick, aye.
Lincoln, Jake.